Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 26, 2005. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we certainly invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:20, almost 10:25 a.m. And we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for this morning. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember LaBange.
Would you all please stand behind the great Kathy Jones Irish, please? Afterwards. Good morning, Mr. President, and to all members of City Council. Thank you very much, Ms. Perez, Ms. Marvel. I am going to sign this document to salute someone who's been very special to me, very special to us all. And yes, Mr. Smith, today is Kathy Jones Irish Day in the 4th District. We salute Kathy Jones Irish because she's turning a new chapter in her life. She has completed her city service and going to the private sector. And please give me a hand for my chief of staff. Kathy and I have known each other for when Jimmy Carter was president. How's that, huh? And Eric Garcetti was five years old. I think that's how it works. But Kathy has been my chief of staff since I was elected, which will be four years this November 1st. And she is to be commended for being the leader of this team of people and working with me as my chief of staff for these years and making a difference for the people of the 4th District. She has been also very involved with the city in her history, working for the late great Gil Lindsay and Dave Cunningham and those offices in years gone past. She has also had great expertise in working in various parts of the Los Angeles County Transportation Commission, the solid waste industry, the water replenishment district, as well as Warner Brothers, which I really was surprised you ever left Warner Brothers because they could have discovered you, Kathy. Made you a big, big star. But Kathy, who was born in Little Rock, Arkansas, was real east in El Cerrito, not Oakland, California, in the San Francisco Bay Area where she moved to Southern California to attend the great college called Occidental, the Occidental Tigers of Eagle Rock. At Occidental College, she was an excellent student and part of graduation, became a Coral Foundation Fellowship, received a Coral Foundation Fellowship in public service. She also received of note a certificate of accomplishment from the Public Policy Analysis Group of the Claremont Graduate School. Kathy has mentored many of the staff, not just of my staff, but of other staffs. Kathy has not just helped me, but I think she's helped many of you. And I'm sorry, not all of our colleagues are here today because they have other assignments because I know they would share that as well. And that's the great thing about a staff member is when you're able to share them with all for the good of the city, and Kathy certainly has done that. She's been a great supporter and advocate of our Sister City program and led delegations to Berlin, to Vancouver, and to San Salvador at various times in the establishment of those sister cities. And I was very proud that she would represent me there in those great sister cities. She has one beautiful son, Brandon Carlton Irish, who is really the light of her life and who is a very special young man and I'm very proud of in the time we've had to spend time together over these years. So now for, as it said here by the great seal of the city of Los Angeles, be resolved by adoption of this resolution, the mayor of the city council along with the city attorney by his representative here, the city controller, who will audit this resolution, Kathy. And all of us here in the city council hereby salute you as chief of staff for the 4th District and express best wishes for your continued success in all future endeavors as you enter the private sector. It's signed by all of us, Kathy, and our city clerk as well. Please give a big hand to Kathy Jones Irish.
Before we allow her to speak, let's hear from Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I rise to just salute you, Kathy, and to really wish you well in your, in your future. The private industry is lucky to have you back. You are such an asset to whatever industry you, you find yourself working in, it is clear by your resume. Personally, I will really miss you. Personally, I have really grown to respect you and admire you. We have traveled together on city business when we went to a sister city event in Bordeaux. We've traveled together in Berlin, in Paris. Our experiences someday, one of us will write a book about it. It will be a tell-all book. We've slept in the same room together. But I, I will, what you said, Tom, about Kathy being shared with everyone, I think that is really the true mark of a public servant. Many times since I sit next to Tom, you are standing back here, and many times I have looked around and couldn't find my staff, and you volunteered to help me with whatever item I need help on. You explain things to me sometimes. But I'll never forget the time I found myself going right after city council to an Orthodox Jewish funeral. And I was wearing, as I usually do, pants, and I was informed that that was not appropriate to attend this funeral in pants, and you said, "I have an extra dress hanging in my closet in my office. You're welcome."
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 26, 2005. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we certainly invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:20, almost 10:25 a.m. And we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for this morning. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Labonge.
Would you all please stand behind the great Kathy Jones Irish, please? Good morning, Mr. President, and to all members of City Council. Thank you very much, Ms. Perez, Ms. Marvel. I am going to sign this document to salute someone who's been very special to me, very special to us all. And yes, Mr. Smith, today is Kathy Jones Irish Day in the 4th District. We salute Kathy Jones Irish because she's turning a new chapter in her life. She has completed her city service and going to the private sector. And please give me a hand for my Chief of Staff. Kathy and I have known each other for when Jimmy Carter was president. How's that, huh? And Eric Garcetti was five years old. I think that's how it works. But Kathy has been my Chief of Staff since I was elected, which will be four years this November 1st. And she is to be commended for being the leader of this team of people and working with me as my Chief of Staff for these years and making a difference for the people of the 4th District. She has been also very involved with the city in her history, working for the late, great Gil Lindsay and Dave Cunningham and those offices in years gone past. She has also had great expertise in working in various parts of the Los Angeles County Transportation Commission, the solid waste industry, the water replenishment district, as well as Warner Brothers, which I really was surprised you ever left Warner Brothers because they could have discovered you, Kathy, made you a big, big star. But Kathy, who was born in Little Rock, Arkansas, was real east in El Cerrito, not Oakland, California, in the San Francisco Bay Area, where she moved to Southern California to attend the great college called Occidental, the Occidental Tigers of Eagle Rock. At Occidental College, she was an excellent student and part of graduation, became a Coral Foundation Fellowship, received a Coral Foundation Fellowship in public service. She also received of note a certificate of accomplishment from the Public Policy Analysis Group of the Claremont Graduate School. Kathy has mentored many of the staff, not just of my staff, but of other staffs. Kathy has not just helped me, but I think she's helped many of you. And I'm sorry, not all of our colleagues are here today because they have other assignments because I know they would share that as well. And that's the great thing about a staff member is when you're able to share them with all for the good of the city, and Kathy certainly has done that. She's been a great supporter and advocate of our Sister City program and led delegations to Berlin, to Vancouver, and to San Salvador at various times in the establishment of those sister cities. And I was very proud that she would represent me there in those great sister cities. She has one beautiful son, Brandon Carlton Irish, who is really the light of her life and who is a very special young man and I'm very proud of in the time we've had to spend time together over these years. So now for, as it said here by the great seal of the City of Los Angeles, be resolved by adoption of this resolution, the mayor of the City Council, along with the city attorney by his representative here, the city comptroller, who will audit this resolution, Kathy, and all of us here in the City Council hereby salute you as Chief of Staff for the 4th District and express best wishes for your continued success in all future endeavors as you enter the private sector. It's signed by all of us, Kathy, and our city clerk as well. Please give a big hand to Kathy Jones Irish.
Before we allow her to speak, let's hear from Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I rise to just salute you, Kathy, and to really wish you well in your in your future. The private industry is lucky to have you back. You are such an asset to whatever industry you you find yourself working in. It is clear by your resume. Personally, I will really miss you. Personally, I have really grown to respect you and admire you. We have traveled together on city business. When we went to a Sister City event in Bordeaux, we've traveled together in Berlin, in Paris. Our experiences, someday, one of us will write a book about it. It will be a tell-all book. We've slept in the same room together. But I will, what you said, Tom, about Kathy being shared with everyone, I think that is really the true mark of a public servant. Many times, since I sit next to Tom, you are standing back here, and many times I have looked around and couldn't find my staff, and you volunteered to help me with whatever item I need help on. You explain things to me sometimes. But I'll never forget the time I found myself going right after City Council to an Orthodox Jewish funeral. And I was wearing, as I usually do, pants, and I was informed that that was not appropriate to attend this funeral in pants. And you said, "I have an extra dress hanging in my closet in my office. You're welcome to use it." And I came up there and borrowed your dress. So giving someone the shirt off your back is exactly a phrase that really epitomizes your generosity and your willingness to help out in any situation. We will really miss you. You have been such an asset to Tom and really everyone who meets you comes away really admiring you and respecting you. Please keep in touch with us. But I think you've got a bigger and better career ahead of you. Congratulations.
Mr. Cardenas.
Well, Kathy, being a Chief of Staff is a tough job. Working for Tom Labonge is probably a piece of cake, right? Yes, right answer. Piece of bread. I just want to personally say thank you, Kathy, for all that you do for us, the intelligence that you exude in these meetings that we have and the kind of policy that we put forward. But equally important to me is the welcome that you gave me when I got on the City Council and the conversations we've had and the opportunity we've gotten to get to know each other. You're a classy individual. You're a wonderful human being, and everything that you've done is of the utmost professionalism. And I really personally appreciate it because whenever our staffs do a job like that, it enhances this city, it enhances this council, and you certainly are an asset. And also, I must be honest with everybody else, when I met you, I thought you were the youngest Chief of Staff. You corrected me, but but the bottom line is you are as intelligent as anybody around here, and I want to thank you for giving of yourself to this city and for serving Tom so well. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've always had a smile on your face. You've always been happy. I don't think you've had a sad day since you've been here at City Hall. I don't know if it's because of Tom and all the history that he imparts to you in the office. I don't know how many missions you've made to pick up the bread that he passes out from the convent, but you've always been inspiration here at City Hall, always been a friendly face, a wonderful smile. And to keep Tom in line had to be a mission and a task for four years that you will always remember. And I love Tom like a brother, but, you know, a couple of shots in there is okay. Whatever you're going to do, and this has totally surprised me, I didn't know you were going to be leaving. It's been kept a secret, I guess, from a lot of people. Maybe they didn't want to realize that it's happening, but whoever you're going to be working for is going to get a wonderful professional, a happy person, a person who obviously loves what she does, loves working. I know you've given a lot to this city. I'll never forget the day that you were at Griffith Park. I think we were going to the event at the zoo, tried to plug that that vehicle in, the electric vehicle, and the plug wouldn't fit, and then we made a motion to try and make sure these plugs, remember that day?
Yes, yes, I did.
So at least we had one motion because of you, one motion here in the City Council. And now they've scrapped all those vehicles, so we don't have to worry about those electric cars. But I wish you well in your future ventures, and this is always a place that I'm sure you'll hold close to your heart. We hold you close to our heart, Kathy. Good luck to you.
Mr. Reyes.
I know folks say we shouldn't be using this time for these ceremonies, but I think you deserve the time we're giving you. You've given so much time for our city. You've been one of those folks that have been able to balance the tension between the haves and the have-nots. You've done a great job doing that. Going back to '91, Neil Peterson, LACTC, MTA, back then, you were a public relations person, and boy, did you take a beating at that time as well. And you've been always dealing with a smile. You responded very constructively. You came up with solutions. And whoever you're going to be working with, I don't want to say whom, but that's up to you, they have a real jewel, a real diamond, and I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I think I'm the one Mr. Reyes was referring to just now, but I don't usually stand up and say a lot of, do a lot of time, but I will say this to you because I've had the pleasure of working with you for many years in two different levels. One here in the horseshoe as a council member, more personally over the years as a chief deputy where we served together. And I know working for this guy kept you slim and trim and looking lovely because you have to chase him around, and that's quite a job, I know. But it's been a great pleasure working with you. You bring a great smile to this building, and you brought great intelligence and exuberance for your job. And I want you to know, I'm very proud of working with you, of what you've accomplished. And on my wall, and Mike Molina's signature is on it too, forever will be a certificate when I got elected from all my fellow chief deputies congratulating me and thanking me for working with them. And you're one of those people that's on that signature on that wall, and I'll always remember those years very fondly because I think we had a great relationship here in City Hall, and we may have fought on a few occasions, but it was always about the issues. And you were a professional and intelligent enough to leave it at that, and the next day we went on to the next issue and worked together. And that's what I respect about you is that you have that great ability and you're a great chief deputy, and it's going to be a big loss to Mr. Labonge to have you go, I know. But it was a delight to work with you, and I will miss you, and I hope you come back and see us from time to time and include me in those chief deputy meetings once in a while, too. We'll get together. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Perry.
Kathy, I don't want to say goodbye. I just want to say I'll see you soon. You really did set the standard for public service, the chief of staff level, and you will be a very difficult, difficult act to follow. And you provided a good, I think it was a yin to Tom's yang. And those are, those are difficult shoes to fill, but and we'll try to make sure he doesn't spin wildly out of control after you leave. Thank you for all that you've done for all of us.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Kathy, as a new kid on the block, my interaction with you has not been as long as my colleagues around the horseshoe, but it has happened. I just want to tell you something, the grass is not greener in the private sector. I've been there, and I look forward to you coming back to public service. Whenever you realize that your commitment to the community, which you've demonstrated here has been phenomenal, will draw you back, and I hope that that we see your face in this horseshoe again. Congratulations, best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and it's all been said already. I just wanted to give you my personal thanks for the way you've treated me since I've been around and you became Chief of Staff and for surprising so many of us with your great Spanish around here. Remember those moments. Please.
Kathy Jones Irish, Chief of Staff, 4th District, City of Los Angeles. Please give her a big hand.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, colleagues, friends, my heart is very full right now. I'd like to thank Tom for four years of a completely undisputable e-ticket ride. And I'd like to thank the staff who has been so dedicated to you, and you have allowed me to help navigate your boat and take you to those places you want it to be. And I thank you all for letting me be a part of this experience. To the City Council, I thank you for your very generous words of compliments, and it is what I will take with me as I go forward in my next professional chapter. I will be sustained by so much that I feel here that I find difficult to articulate in words, but thank you for this tribute, and I hope I continue to live up to your standards that you have set for me. I'd also like to thank the city staff with whom I have worked and for those who have supported me in helping me do the job that I do. We have great talent here in this house. We do good things here, and some of you may know of my past experience here in City Hall. And when I returned to come to Tom's office, I was welcomed so warmly by familiar faces, and then I also met new people, younger people. And you have all been a joy to work with, and I look forward to sustaining those relationships long after I leave City Hall. I, I'm at a loss for any more words to say, but thank you for this moment, this very bright moment. Muchisimas gracias. Que le vaya bien.
Kathy, before you go, this is for Brandon, a loaf of pumpkin bread, because I know he loved that, her son. And this is a great book on Los Angeles, past and present, because you're part of Los Angeles past and you're part of, and you're part of Los Angeles present, and you'll be certainly part of Los Angeles's future. Kathy Jones Irish, give her a wonderful, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members, for the nice words.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and congratulations to the angels and the City of Angels. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, signed for the, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before proceeding to our one other presentation this morning, colleagues, let's dispense with consent items. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labonge moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 26. On item number 26, there are three reports on the file, and I believe there is a request on item number 14 to continue that matter.
Okay, for, by Mr. Reyes, for how long?
They just echoed, I was going to say, continues on item 14. Thank you.
For a day, for a week?
For one week.
For one week, okay. Any objection, colleagues? Seeing none, item 14 is continued. 1 through 26 before us. These items have had public hearings, so a motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Mr. President, 22 and 27.
Okay, 22 calls special. We'll get to 27 in a second. 1 through 26, any other specials? Mr. Zine.
17.
17, call special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? Going once, going twice? Let's open the roll and the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Items 1 and 2 are ordinances and carry over for second readings.
Mr. President, my apologies, I was supposed to make a technical correction on number 2, if I could.
Okay, let's reopen the roll and reconsideration of item 2. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that's back before us, and the technical amendment?
Yes, to remove the directional notations on the streets. They added north and south, et cetera, on the streets on the zone case that are not necessary because they'd be removed.
Okay, with those corrections, is there anything further on item 2? Mr. Cardenas.
Apologize, Council President, that item 25, on behalf of the Chairman of the Budget Committee, Councilman Parks, we need to refer that to budget. It did not go to budget committee.
Okay, on item 2, if there's nothing further, let's open the roll on the items amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is, again, carries over for a second reading. Let's open the roll and reconsideration of item 25. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, item 25 back before us, and without objection, refer to the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, I'd like to have item 13 move forthwith.
Forthwith on 13. Okay, all items approved today shall go forthwith, recognizing the council is in recess this Friday. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 27 through 47, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
And I do not have requests for members of the public to speak. On items 27 through 47, those public hearings are opened and closed. Mr. Rosendahl calls 27 special. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith.
27 as well.
Any other specials, 27 through 47? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Items 48 through 52 are closed session items. Let's hold those on the desk. Next item, please.
Next items on the continuation agenda, items 53 and 54 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Numbers 53 and 54 now before us, public hearings have been held on these items. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. Specials, Ms. Hahn.
Yeah, I'd like to call item 54 special, and I'd also like to move that we reopen a brief public hearing.
Okay, 54 calls special by Ms. Hahn, and I don't think there's an objection to reopening the public hearing. Is there a request to call item 53 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 53. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that ordinance carries over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Next item on the continuation is item number 55, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Okay, and I do not have speaker cards on item 55. That hearing is open and closed. Any requests to call item 55 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Did that just get sent forthwith?
Move for reconsideration of that. I mean, come on.
Of item 55? Okay, let's open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
I mean, I would just, I think it's better.
Call special by Mr. Weiss. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, let's proceed to general public comment for today's meeting. The council calls forward Phyllis Doherty, followed by Esther Lofton, Roberto Carvajal, Candy Domares, and our delegation from the South Central Farmers. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. I'm Phyllis Doherty. I'm here as a resident of the City of Los Angeles and also because I am very involved in animal work in the city. And I have deep concerns that I think need to come to your attention regarding the dysfunctions that are developing in regard to animal control in the city. This is a department that cannot be dismantled because it will immediately impact the safety of the citizens and what happens in the streets every day of a city and of each of your areas. The unfortunate thing that's developing is that you have a commission that has absolutely no animal control experience. Not one person is interested in the laws of the city, and that there seems to be an interest in merely changing the rules that are applied to animals in order to allow animals to meet the standards of the activists that are now involved in endangering some of the employees. I'm here to speak on behalf of the employees and also these programs. The council or the commission has passed policies that do not allow temperament testing of dogs in the shelters. This also impacts the citizens who adopt them. Soon they are attempting to pass a policy that will abolish the limits on cats and allow catteries to exist in residential neighborhoods. There, it concerns me deeply because the comments are made that these policies need to be changed in such a way that they will not come before the council. That's alarming because they automatically know that you will not approve. I've written each of you a letter. I hope you will read it carefully and take it seriously. I'm never frivolous when I come before you, and I have been concerned and involved in this for a very, very long time. We do not want to get back to the point of having dog packs in every neighborhood of the city and having everyone afraid to be in the streets. Please, please take this seriously. You've funded programs, you've supported very, very positive approaches, and I hope that you will continue to uphold those.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Esther Lofton, and I live at 1327 South Van Ness Boulevard with my son, and because of him, I am not homeless, but technically I am. I'm here this morning in response to the article titled "Mayor vows funds to aid homeless", LA Times. And his final statement said he also wanted to find even more money for affordable housing. "It's not enough," Mr. Villarrealgoza said, "and we need to go well beyond that." A large percentage of the homeless people look like me, and I believe they are homeless for the same reason I am, that there is not one functioning American institution in my part of town. In 1964, my husband and I filed suit against the Los Angeles Unified School District, proving that they denied each of us, my husband and I, of the right to work through fraud, collusion, and manifest abuse of discretion. Since that date, it has been a proven issue. The county council signed pre-trial statements that every allegation that we had made was true. He also appeared in court April 12, 1967, and admitted in the court that it was true. We have had two final, two partial judgments in case number 895188. But because we are pro persona, I guess we have proven the added. But because we are pro persona, I guess we have proven the adage, a lawyer that represents himself has a fool for a client. But we still are entitled to representation. Even though we have filed suit and won it, we have been on the streets of Los Angeles, our family has been broken up, but I'm not going to go through that. Recently, we filed a, I filed a suit against Yvonne Brathwaite Burke, who is my supervisor, to force her to represent me. As, as I said, I guess I'm a fool, and I have, I'm the client. Unfortunately, I didn't do well. But she got the city attorney to represent her, which she should not have, because they were the losing attorneys on that issue.
Ma'am, may I ask you to conclude, please, we have other speakers waiting.
I will do it as fast as I can. And presently, I have been pushed out of court, and any court in the state of California, because I cannot pay $5,000. But that should not deprive me of the right to sue or to win, something that I've already won, and the issues still remain the same. I need the help. I do not have a city councilwoman now, but I'm putting this before the city council. I have won the suit, there have been partial allegations, and I'd like to have the judgment nunk pro tunk, which is now for then, for those of you who know, and maybe I can assist Mayor Villarrealosa to help some of the people who look like me, who are homeless, like I've been.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Roberto Carvajal, and I'm here to represent non-convicted sex offenders. Been before you before on another matter concerning faridism, the use of electricity for therapeutic purposes. And today, I'm here to bring you some websites that might be of interest to some people. One is SoHopeful International, which is at sohopeful.org. There are groups, CSOM.org, CSOM.org, which is Sex, Center for Sex Offender Management. I have one at Faridism Yahoo Groups, which can link you up to those. And I brought some paperwork to you yesterday, another website, robertocarvajal.itco.com, where I explain all the harassment, attempted murders, shootings, stabbings, evictions, firings, that I've gone through over two decades, with the assistance of your police department and several others in the area. I've asked for help from Jan Perry's office, she responded by having somebody purge themselves, so I haven't been able to come to you, that I threatened her, so I haven't been able to come to you for three years. It's my first time being back, I'll be speaking before you again on this, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Candido.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez.
Good morning, my name is Maria Rodriguez.
Yo represento los campesinos de South Central Farmer, 41 y Alameda.
I represent the South Central Farmers at 41st and Alameda.
Yo quiero pedirles a los concejales que nos ayuden, por favor, a quedarnos ahí.
I want to ask the councilmembers to please help us stay there.
Para seguir cosechando nuestros vegetables, nuestras verduras para nuestros hijos.
So we can continue to grow our vegetables and our greens for our children.
Por favor, ayúdenos.
Please help us.
Thank you.
Hello, buenos dias, mi nombre es José Rodríguez.
Good morning, my, my name is José Rodríguez.
Yo vengo representando el centro de Los Ángeles.
I've come to represent the South Central of Los Angeles.
Por el jardín, que nos dejen estar ahí.
To let us stay at the garden.
Tengo tres niños.
I have three children.
Y ellos se mantienen ocupados en el jardín.
And they keep themselves busy at the garden.
Please, que nos ayuden, por favor.
Please help us, please.
A cuidar el jardín.
To take care of the garden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Remedio Zapata. Yo solamente quiero decirles una frase que escribió mi hijo, que dice—
Good morning, my name is—
Remedio Zapata.
—and I would like to just give you a phrase that my child wrote.
Donde hay árboles, está verde, y donde está verde, hay vida.
Where the, where there's trees, it is green, and where it is green, there's life.
Donde hay vida, estamos nosotros, recuerden lo verde es vida, gracias.
And where there's life, that's where we are, please remember that green is life. Thank you.
Gracias al grupo. Thank you very much. Candido.
Good, good morning, councilmembers. This morning, in the paper, council takes control of Owens Pact amidst rising costs. Now, some people might think that's a power play, but that's this council doing its job. That's this council protecting the people of this great city, so I thank you for that, that is very, very important. And when we talk about costs, let's talk about the human cost. There are a lot of things happening there, and we must address those issues. I know I've become a pain in the, you know where, for the last two years, I brought a, a contract that involved janitorial supplies, but I would like to submit another contract that we were able to stop last week, that the commissioners will be considering this coming Tuesday. It's a contract for $2.1 million, and what they're going to do is give a contract to one sole source. What you're doing is you're taking away opportunity to a lot of small businesses. This is the same thing that happened with the janitorial supply, same group of individuals overseeing it. Ms. Han, the same individual that lied to your committee. This again, this sole source has no small business participation, has no women-owned participation, has no minority participation. And yet, the chance of them getting a $2.1 million contract for one year with a five-year renewal option, that's almost close to $13 million, and each and every one of you will be affected by it, because you all have small businesses that do business with the City of Los Angeles, with the Department of Water and Power. So please, take a look at that. The commissioners are doing a great job, they're asking the tough questions, but please, each and every one of you is going to be affected by this, so please, ask some of the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Before proceeding to the items we called special, we have a second and final presentation today by Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and it's a pleasure to have with me today, Mr. Harold Hambrick, who represents the Los Angeles Black Business Expo and Trade Show. You're alone, right? Okay. This year, the 17th Annual Black Business Expo will take place on October 28th, 29th, and 30th, at the Los Angeles Convention Center, Tom Bradley Hall. The Expo and Trade Show started in 1998 as a means to provide exposure to and empower otherwise obscure black-owned businesses so that they can grow and hire people from the community. The mission of this organization is to support the development and growth of African-American businesses and enterprises. Approximately 39,000 businesses in the Los Angeles metropolitan area with revenue of over $4.5 billion to date have come into existence. Through business promotions, consumer education, training, and financing, over 500 corporate and small businesses from the Los Angeles area will exhibit products and services to over 70,000 attendees. This is an extraordinary event that celebrates the diversity and strength of our business community right here in Los Angeles. I'd like to encourage everyone to attend, come to the convention center this weekend to take part in what is certain to be a great event. And I just want to say that it's an honor to present this resolution to Mr. Hambrick of the Los Angeles Black Business Expo and Trade Show, and to congratulate the Expo on its 17th year in Los Angeles, and to declare this October 28th, 29th, and 30th, Los Angeles Black Business Weekend here in the City of Los Angeles. Let's give him a hand.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jan Perry, for allowing us to—
Thank you.
—honor and recognize the L.A. Black Business Expo and Trade Show, and for declaring this weekend, L.A. Black Business Weekend in Los Angeles. This is an important trade show, this is an important opportunity to really focus on, particularly, women-owned businesses. I love it that your theme this year is celebrating the new face of women in business, and I think that's really important, because as diverse as we are, and as inclusive as we are, I still think it's important to encourage women, to, especially to encourage African-American women, to really make those courageous, bold investments in their own future, by starting a business, by enhancing their business. And I also love it that you're going to have a youth summit at your trade show this weekend. Again, I, I think it's important to begin mentoring our young people in terms of the kinds of careers and businesses that they can actually get involved in here in the Los Angeles. And I also love that, of course, that you're focusing on the international trade industry at one of, of your workshops, because, again, I feel that with the Port of Los Angeles, just a few miles down the Harbor Freeway, it's still kind of been a disconnect with a lot of businesses, of small, medium, minority, women-owned businesses, to make the connection to this booming international trade industry. That is the industry that is, is really growing, it's expected to sort of triple in growth just in the Port of Los Angeles in the next 20 years, and we need to be able to connect people in Los Angeles with that international trade industry. So hopefully, this will be a successful trade show, you'll have a successful weekend, and thank you, Jan, for allowing us to put the spotlight on this very, very important trade show this weekend. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, and Councilwoman Han, and the rest of the council. As I said last year, and I'll repeat it this year, but with an addition of another name, it is in the spirit of the late Rosa Parks, Frederick Douglass, Booker T. Washington, Mary McLeod Bethune, Marcus Garvey, Malcolm X, W.B. Du Bois, Harriet Tubman, Sojourner Truth, Madam C.J. Walker, Biddy Mason, who was very important to this city, Dr. Martin Luther King, and the late Tom Bradley, that we will gather in the Tom Bradley Hall this weekend to have a productive 17th Annual Los Angeles Black Business Expo and Trade Show. Thank you for your support, and I would like to invite each and every one of you on December the 3rd to the Watts Christmas Parade on Central Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 17, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
I'd like to continue that for two weeks, please.
Okay, any objection, colleagues? Item 17, for two weeks, seeing none.
The new date will be November 9th.
So ordered. Next item.
Next item is item number 22, called special by Councilmember Rosendale.
Mr. Rosendale.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like any city staff related to this issue to come on up. This has to do with the sworn overtime usage by LAPD. Good morning. Who's here? Mark Adams from Los Angeles World Airports. Hello, Mark.
Harriet O. from Police Department.
Could you give us an update of what we have in front of us here?
Well, Councilman, I don't have staff here on this issue, it's a note-and-file report that discusses our overtime at LAX. So I'm, I'm not able to discuss the specifics of the report.
How about CLA? Sharon, could you give us an update of what this is about?
Yes, Councilman, this is simply a note-and-file report. It's something that is submitted to the Budget and Finance Committee on a regular basis pursuant to their request to monitor overtime usage at the airports. I believe this most recent status report indicates that there is presently about $2 million from the last billing period, which will eventually be reimbursed to the general fund.
And we're looking at 555,379.8 overtime hours. At least, that's what the report says.
That is, that was probably submitted by the Police Department, and if that's what it says, and it's probably equated to about $1 million. Is that correct?
That's right. Just, why do we have so much overtime at LAX? Just a generic question.
I would defer to the Police Department, but my understanding is, is that LAX has required overtime from the Police Department ever since 9/11, and that we have had LAPD officers deployed there on a regular basis, and pursuant to that, any hours that are worked at airports is reimbursable to the general fund by the airports. As a result of that, last year, the Police Department was budgeted for about $55 million, but ultimately, they spent about $70 million, and that was largely due to the fact that we have officers deployed at airports, and as a result, there was a large reimbursement to the general fund from the airports as a result of that overtime.
Of course, it's a good thing that we have them there, number one, and it's also a good thing that LAWA picks up the tab.
Yes.
Going forward, has there been any thoughts about restructuring the number of personnel there so that it isn't an overtime issue, or, or does that not work?
The airport has reported to several of the committees, Budget and Finance, Public Safety, Commerce Committee, on the issue of our, the airport police staffing levels. I think our long-term goal is to eventually phase out the use of LAPD officers on overtime. The principal use of these officers right now is at the passenger screening stations, where we are required under federal regulations to provide a local law enforcement officer at that point. And we've been, because the airport police is in a growth and recruiting cycle, if you will, the use of those officers, the LAPD officers on overtime for that purpose has been used to date.
There's also another issue, and I know you're working on it, and I really appreciate it, and we look forward to the report. Are there more LAPD officers assigned to LAX than those within the cash flow relationship with LAWA? From what I'm told, there's 20 more officers, is that true?
I believe that came up in a discussion in committee, Councilman, and there was a recent instruction for the department and LAWA to report back on whether or not those 22 additional officers need to be there, or whether LAWA should pay for them, since they are there. But that's something that I can't discuss the details of at this point, but we are going to report back on, on that.
Yep, and I think the public, because this is something that, at least my, my folks in the Westchester area were aware of, and when we had the measure on the ballot about the airport police, it was brought up more than once to me, that we have 22 officers also assigned to LAX that are not part of the LAWA relationship where LAWA pays for them. We, the City of Los Angeles, pay for them, and we don't get reimbursed from LAWA, and there also tends to be some folks saying, well, they don't need to be there, other folks say they need to be there, but it's been going on for three years, and I'm really looking forward to a report back to committees, Budget and Finance, which I sit on, the Commerce Committee, which I sit on, and of course, the full City Council, for resolution of it. If, in fact, LAWA needs more of our sworn officers, I obviously want our city treasury to be reimbursed if they don't need it for security purposes. We could certainly use them in the 11th district, where we're losing a lot of our officers, to where violent crime has, has taken precedent over the crime I have in my district. Is there any sense of when we'll get that report back?
I believe we just received the instruction within a number of days, so I would, I would guess probably three to four weeks.
Well, I, I look forward to that, thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Weiss, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Labonge under cue. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rosendale, you were asking questions—
Mr. Rosendahl, you were asking questions. I wasn't certain whether you were asking rhetorically or if you were just asking them, why do we have this situation? We have this situation because, for reasons that are, it's a long story, and obviously, for me, it's somewhat disappointing, we are not doing the right thing in letting Chief Bratton take control of security at LAX. And as a result of that, we have this hybrid structure, which does not make sense from a law enforcement standpoint, does not make sense from a security standpoint, and does not make sense from a fiscal standpoint. We still have, unless I'm wrong, a dozen or two dozen LAPD officers stationed at LAX that were initially stationed there by Chief Parks, that LAX has consistently refused to pay for over the years. So it is not a good state of play. It's one which we will hopefully find a better way of addressing in the coming weeks and months, because you're right, there are fiscal ramifications, but there remain security ramifications that you can shake your head at them. But in my view, Ms. Hahn, LAX is and remains one of the top terrorist targets in this region, and I want the top law enforcement agency in the region, the Los Angeles Police Department, to be in charge of security at that airport. That is my goal. That remains my goal.
Ms. Zein.
I'll just come over here, if that's all right. Thank you. The issue that is concerned is the deployment of personnel and the costs involved in public safety, public safety at the top. Has it ever been considered to take the limited number of LAPD officers that are at L.A. Airport, remove them, put them back in the field, different divisions, and let LAWA police handle the airport operations, since we supplement them? And if they need us, then we could simply respond, as we would do in any other situation, with the LAPD resources. Has that ever been proposed, to streamline more efficient, more effective, and let the police deployment go back to the operations that we clearly and desperately need throughout the City of Los Angeles?
Well, I don't know the answer to that, Councilman.
And as far as the airport goes, as with my colleague from the Police Department here, I'm not the best person to respond to that. I know we've looked at several different models for how to handle deployment issues, but if the council wants to get into this, I think we could bring the appropriate personnel down to answer these questions.
I think we should do that, because as I recall, the LAPD has a substation at that site. Certain number of personnel are assigned there. And for whatever reason, LAPD decided to add additional personnel, and LAWA said, we don't need those personnel, but LA said, we need those personnel. So we put those personnel at the taxpayers' expense when those personnel came out of the other operations throughout the city. So I would prefer to take, and no disrespect to LAPD or to LAWA police, but since it's LAWA property, and they have a fully-staffed police department, to have them take that mission. And if they need assistance from the LAPD on those occasions, then we would provide assistance, as we would do with the Sheriff's Department or a neighboring community. And I think that we then get 50 or 75, or whatever number, of LAPD officers back to the LAPD functions policing the City of Los Angeles. We could still have them work the overtime at the certain locations where they work overtime, which is paid by LAWA, which means they're not taking away from the taxpayers. But then, I understand, it also counts the FLSA, the total number of hours an officer can work. To me, the preference would be, since we have a dedicated police department there, to let them handle responsibilities. And since the voters already decided to keep LAWA police separate and not merge with the LAPD, and I know that there's some discussion, and it may continue for the next 10 years, but we have a need for LAPD officers on the streets of Los Angeles. We have a ready force there that could do that, and let LAWA police the properties in a satisfactory manner. I'd like to hear back from the executives from LAWA, also the Police Department, and maybe continuing it would be the answer, so we can get those answers.
Well, I think we can address that issue in our report back on the whole matter, if you like, Councilman.
I'd like to have that back, because I know it's going to go back and forth for, like, a tennis match. And what we need to do is come up with a plan that's safe for LAX, safe for the City of Los Angeles. But I clearly know that the police divisions in the City of Los Angeles, the 19 divisions, need additional personnel. They're doing hiring. It takes a long time to hire and to train. We got ready, trained officers there who are deployed with a minimal force of deployment, which could be desperately needed, and assist Hollenbeck and all the other divisions within the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labonte.
Thank you. Mr. President, I need some advice here. Should we continue this to next week so that we can have a better discussion on this? Does anyone have any advice on that?
Well, again, the report that's before us is simply a routine report to note and file, doesn't end the discussion. We can certainly continue. That's the will of the body. But if there's--
I think detective, is it Detective Ito or Officer Ito?
Yes, Detective.
Detective. Detective Ito, you're not the representative, you're the council liaison, and I appreciate that, Detective.
But we have been instructed to report back on the issue of the 22 officers--
To where?
To the council.
To the council. So we'll come back to this council?
Yes.
So, instead of committees, come back, ours are coming back to council. So I think we'll hold our remarks at this time. But I do want to say, I understand what's going on. We need to have protection out there, but at the same time, we need to have that protection in every part of the city. And then, LAWA has its jurisdiction, because I think the previous mayor, two ago, you know who that was? Richard Ridden. You know, had that problem out there at the airport. Is that correct? Were you there at the airport at that time, where they wanted to use money from the airports beyond the airport boundaries? And the laws prevent that from happening? I just know this, whether it's a Los Angeles police officer or whether it's a Los Angeles airport police officer, the public likes to see security at LAX. And the Los Angeles police officers of the airport department do an effective job. And I'm standing up for them, as I will stand up every time, as I will stand up for LAPD officers too. But we know we have to balance it out and make sure that the books are balanced in the end. But we also should have a full discussion on this, because I want to make sure that the Los Angeles Police Department, first and most priority is the City of Los Angeles, which does include the airport, which does include Union Station, which does include San Pedro and Chatsworth in the San Fernando Valley, and all the neighborhoods. Someone told me at a community meeting last night, Detective, they got a ticket, and I don't know if it was your guys from Northeast who gave them a ticket, it may have been DOT, because they parked at a Silver Lake house halfway in the driveway. And the next night, they parked legally, and they got their car window broken on the street. You know, I'm going to investigate that. But it's making sure there's enough police in the neighborhoods, because I think that's what Mr. Rosendahl was talking about, and also making sure the airport is safe, so the traveling public feels secure, and we can prevent anything that may occur there. So since this is coming back to council, I'll repeat my speech, but only refine it to more detail, so we extract the right steps forward to serve the city in its highest way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I think it's unfortunate that, Councilman Weiss, you still keep trying to have this debate. You know, you've lost this fight every time. You've lost it on the City Council. The voters agreed that the LAX airport police were the agency, the first-rate security agency that is going to secure LAX. And in fact, they have an impeccable record, protecting passengers, protecting visitors, protecting LAX. Every time they've come back, they've had an A-plus on their job performance. So to continue to keep calling them less than a first-rate security agency is wrong. And it's wrong for you to say that in public. There is no reason for our traveling public, there is no reason for anyone that goes through LAX to believe that we don't have anything but the finest police officers out there securing our airport. And ask anybody, and most people would agree, that they feel completely safe traveling at L.A. International Airport. Why we're at this position, if you want to know, it was an audit that Councilman Weiss actually called for before we had the charter ballot, that we could actually investigate and review the performance of LAX police officers. And what they found in that was, we happen to have these extra LAPD officers out there that frankly, no one quite knew what they were doing, or what their job performance was. And that's why it came to light that we had these 22 extra LAPD officers out there that LAWA did not want to reimburse the city for, because LAWA, under our city charter, has complete control over the police force out there. They did not ask for extra LAPD officers, and they said, and you should know this, you know, the LAX cannot expend funds unless it's been approved, unless the FAA agrees with it. And this was a decision that was made unilaterally by the police chief, not in any accordance with what LAX wanted to do in terms of their policing. So that's why we're where we are today. And I don't think, you know, unfortunately, the city's going to get reimbursed, because it was not an agreed-upon extra police force. I lost 32 officers in the Harbor Division. I would love to have these 22 officers deployed to the Harbor Division. I agree with Tom Labonte, who says, the number-one, you know, priority for LAPD is the streets. And we need these police officers back on the streets. And hopefully, that will come back in the report, that we'll be able to tell whether or not we can more effectively deploy those police officers back on the very violent streets of Los Angeles, and allow LAX to control the police force out there. And when we want backup, Chief Bratton, you know, has already agreed to have sort of a seamless, you know, command out there. And when we need backup, we can get it. But this is a fight, you know, you need to give up, Jack.
Mr. Smith.
Well, regardless of whether Mr. Weiss is right or wrong, or whether we need to give it up or not, the point is, we're here today, and the fact of the matter is, is that we're putting officers at LAX that don't, that cost us more than what we get reimbursed for. And the way it costs us more is, when those officers who are on overtime work their overtime shift, the airport pays us, they lose the overtime hours that they can work for LAPD, their assigned divisions. These are people that come in from other divisions to work overtime shifts. They're really assigned in Devonshire, they're assigned in San Pedro and the Harbor, they're assigned in other divisions. They come and work over there, they get reimbursed, but then we lose their ability to use them in overtime shifts because of FSLA laws. And so we've had a loss to us of manpower. We cannot put those people back on the streets under FSLA. There's only four officers I ever see out there really doing anything really critically important, and that's the motor cops that work out there and help with the traffic issues. But our officers that are sitting out there are behind a desk, behind the TSA people, and they're sitting there reading books. I was there at the airport just Sunday, and I said, what are those guys doing? Why are we paying them to sit there when an armed professional security guard can do the same job, because they're past the check-in point, they're past three checks by federal authorities, and they're sitting there doing nothing but presenting a gun in case somebody was to run through three checks and get through somehow? And so we could do a better job of using people and then putting them on overtime, and then taking them off our departmental roles and using someplace else. Ms. Zein, you're absolutely right. We need to look at this. This is not the context today. This is just a known file. I would think we ought to sit down, write a motion, let's look at the entire LAPD issue and say, airport department, as long as your union spent a million or two bucks to make sure that you run the airport security, then run it, and let LAPD pull out. And we'll be there under mutual aid when they need us to back us up. We'll be there with our specialized units, the bomb squad, et cetera, when they need us to back them up. But as far as ongoing operations go, that is not LAPD's job anymore. The airport security people wanted to keep it, then let them keep it.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to wrap it up by saying, I know I took something out of the consent and put it into the light of my colleagues here for a discussion, and for the viewers on Channel 35 also to say, we have several big issues. One is there 22 officers there that are from LAPD we, the city, have not gotten reimbursed. That's story one. Story two is the question of overtime and how that impacts the overall overtime issue. And three is Mr. Weiss's issues that continued to surface. So I'm delighted we all did this, and I hope I didn't indulge anybody's time on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will just say to Ms. Hahn, and I will call her Ms. Hahn, that it is unfortunate that you appear to view this issue as a personal issue. This is a public safety, public policy issue. It's not an issue about personalities or individuals. And the reality is that if you want to make it about individuals, the individuals whom I care about the most here are Chief Bernard Parks and Chief Bill Bratton, who have said unequivocally, year after year after year, that the LAPD ought to be the agency in charge of security at LAX. And the reality, folks, is that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when the attack occurs at LAX, because everybody expects that LAX remains such a prime target for terrorism. And it has been attacked. It was terrorist-attacked LAX on July 4, 2002. When the next attack occurs, the response will be almost entirely within the purview of the Los Angeles Police Department. They are the only force that is capable to respond with the force, tactics, and skill necessary to respond to a terrorist attack. And that is the reality that we need to deal with and understand in Los Angeles, and it's my obligation to continue to raise that.
Mr. Labonte.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I just wanted to rise to support your concept. This is a note-and-file, but yet we should have a full discussion on it. And, Mr. Weiss, it's not personal. It's all about how we believe this city should be operated. Core values are so important. Detective Ito, what is the core value of the Los Angeles Police Department?
I'm going to fail.
To protect and serve the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Surprise. You look like you were about Adam 12 age, and I am sorry that you missed that, Harry. The core value of--
I think I'm more the Dragnet age.
LAX, to provide safe travel in and out of Los Angeles. Core values are so important. And the core value of the Los Angeles Police Department is the whole city. And having been here 30 years, and seeing how some objects of what were roles because of other challenges have been decreased sometimes, and I mentioned this woman who lives in Silver Lake, who parked her car halfway over her driveway and got a ticket on a Sunday night, and then on a Monday night, her car got broken too, when she parked legally. The core values of what we want for safety throughout the city. And there needs to be more police officers throughout the City of Los Angeles, more men and women to do that. And there may need to be more Los Angeles airport police to specifically focus on that issue. But the big thing, too, in all of us, is we should have cooperation, where we could work together. It doesn't matter what badge you have on, that you have a badge, you're going to work together for the good of the people and their public safety. Because maybe the county sheriffs may get there before all the, before Harry gets from downtown, because they're in Inglewood, or they're closer to, in the county area, if there's some incident at LAX. I'll stand down at this time, but I'll stand down with appreciation of the work of the airport police, and the great appreciation of the work of the Los Angeles Police Department throughout the City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Hey, with me, everything's personal. Because you know what? It's lives. It's about saving lives, and it's unfortunate, and it's just not true that the LAPD is the only agency that can respond to a terrorist attack. That is just frankly not true. That's why we have highly-trained, highly-skilled port police officers who are on the front lines every day on the war on terrorism, because our port is the most vulnerable entryway into this country. And they are down there in the water, under the water, boarding ships, protecting cruise ship passengers. And that's why at the airport, we have a highly-trained, highly-effective police force that has had an independent consultant review that came back and said they were an impeccable police force, and were actually, had been commended nationwide for their ability to protect the airport and to respond in the event of an emergency or terrorist attack. So it's just not true. Look, LAPD is our police force for the City of Los Angeles, but they have a big job protecting the streets, and we need more police officers. But in no way should we ever diminish the men and women who are in the airport police force or the harbor police force. They are trained specifically in a different way than LAPD is trained, and they have a different jurisdiction. And frankly, I know that I put my life in their hands every time I go out there, and I completely trust their ability to respond to any emergency at that airport. And it's unfortunate that other things have been said this morning.
Thank you. And the city attorneys asked me to remind everybody that the item before us is a report regarding-- regarding the LAPD's sworn overtime use at the airport. The closer we can stick to that as a subject matter, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Zine.
Well, if we're going to stick to that, then I will join my colleague, Councilmember Smith, and draft in a motion to address the issue at the appropriate time. And I also want to commend, while we're talking about overtime, the port police, the airport police, LAPD, and all the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Recommendations to note and file this report. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 27, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl and Reyes and Zine, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed that contains a new ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Rosendahl, Council President. Colleagues, it was very clear we still had concerns about how we approach this issue of the antennas and how they get sited and built in our city. And I'm going to thank my colleagues who were able to meet Councilmember Zine's office, Councilmember Gruels, the city attorney, planning staff, Department of Building and Safety. We came up with were some amendments, language that tries to create a laser beam notification so that each council office is notified when there's an application for an actual cell tower or cell signal device on a building, that each council office gets notified if the facility will be built in your district. Certified mail will determine who in your office signed off on the notice. You'll be given 20 days to reach all the appropriate stakeholders within that area so we could maintain a level of accountability when these facilities are being proposed. We also altered some of the physical conditions in terms of their appearance, their impact physically. We provided language that reinforced and improved the screening of these facilities so they can become unnoticedable to the extent possible. We already know that when they are above three stories high on the building, they're hard to see anyway from the street level. The one area we could not touch, again because of FCC and federal regulations, is the impact on the health issues. We are restricted by the federal government from dealing with those specific concerns, but we've done everything in our power to essentially lay out as much advance notice each council office so we can do our job in essentially notifying the stakeholders. So I encourage and I vote, and thank you for your support, and thank the different offices, both in the departments and the council, for working together on this.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to acknowledge Councilmember Reyes for the work you did on this, answered all the questions, have all the items covered. Appreciate the notification we're going to get. We will be able to disseminate that appropriately, and the work that your office did to put this together, I commend you for that, I thank you for that, and I'm sure the committees of Los Angeles do. Thank you very much, strongly supporting on this measure as we have now. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Mr. President. As I had said when we discussed this last week, that I'm going to vote no on this, frankly, because as much as I appreciate what my colleagues have done, especially Mr. Reyes with what he's put forward, my big issue has to do with health, and I know that others around the horseshoe have said, "Let's be honest about it." Well, I am honest about it. My bottom line is, until the federal government acts on these issues, I think our people have some health issues that are unresolved. I am putting a motion before us, not today, but I'm putting it in there, that basically says that in our legislative agenda, we should talk to Washington that would give cities an opportunity in land use decisions regarding of the placement of cell tower phones on health concerns. As much as the federal government has preempted it with the 1996 Cable Act, it doesn't make it right that they did it, and I just want to go on record again and say that we don't know if it's a health issue or not, and since there are real concerns, even those commercial buildings have people working in those buildings, and in my district, some of those commercial districts have housing and residential neighborhoods now mixed within it. So I'm concerned, and I just want my colleagues to know, I'm going to vote no on this.
Mr. Labanche.
Is there any staff here? Because I had a technical question. Oh, Dan Green, City Planning Department. Deputy City Planner, is that right now, Mr. Green? Associate City Planner, give me the title.
Councilman Labanche, Daniel Green, zoning administrator.
Zoning Administrator, ZA's office.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to visualize, Langisham Boulevard, there's high-rise on Langisham. Does that mean there'll be no need for a hearing for the old Hewitt Packet Building at, let's say, Magnolia and Langisham?
If that's a tall building, you're saying, well over 36 feet in height, and they comply with the requirements of this ordinance, they screen it. It's the same color as the wall that it's nearby, it's the same texture as the wall, so it looks like an integral component of the building, and it doesn't take up more than 10% of that roof, and it's not more than 10 feet in height above the roof. Yes, that could proceed by right.
What happens, like just recently, there was a couple of cases that were turned down on over height, not on over height, on cell towers on tops of buildings. So let's say if last month your office denied something on a boulevard somewhere in the city, next month, they could be exempted from this and go right ahead.
Councilman, I can't respond to the two cases that you're referencing. I don't know anything about them.
Well, let me ask you a question. If you denied something in the ZA's office last month with the change, based on what the law was last month, based on what is proposed today, next month, they may be able to get it without any approval.
Correct.
So how are we going to inform people? Isn't this a pretty big change?
They would be informed through the procedure that Mr. Reyes discussed earlier, that your office would be notified that a permit has been applied for, and then your constituents could be notified if they wanted to pursue that.
Why doesn't the Planning Department notify? Or, you know, I think we need to have, what I really need to have is, sitting next to you, Dan Green, is the people from the cell site community, those who are advocating for cell sites, and there should be those from the neighborhood council community there, because there's the discussion on it, back and forth, and there should be the Bureau of Street Lighting there, because I think we could solve a lot of this problem by attaching some unit at the top of our street lamps, so you don't have to infringe upon private property and quite possibly solve some of this problem. I'm just concerned that 36 is too low. What, how'd you get 36?
Well, 36 feet is at least a three-story building, and there may be some exceptions, but generally, if you have 10 feet per floor and a pitched roof, that's about 36 feet. And if you were to put a facility on top of that, we just felt that the height...
Prop U, that made all 36 feet? Is that what the law is on? What's Prop U? Refresh my memory.
Prop U, Councilman, limited the floor area ratio that could be built in commercial zones from what had been three times the buildable floor area to one and a half times, but it did not affect the absolute height limits.
What's an absolute height limit?
If you had a 1VL height limit, that would be 45 feet, or 1XL, which would be 30.
Mr. Reyes, see, what I got burned on years ago, working for John Farrar, is a guy that said there's a three-story height limit, and he put two stories of parking, and it became a five-story building. So all of a sudden, everything I told the community, that we fought hard for three stories, they put five stories in by two layers of parking above grade, and then they still, quote, "qualified" for whatever's there. I should think there should be an absolute height limit of, let's say, 40 feet, because then you get out of that close proximity to what would a three-story building be if there's a 40-foot limit. So I'd rather say 40 foot as opposed to 36. That's fine, so I have friendly amendment to change it from 36 to 40 feet, because it does stress that in this ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
It states very specifically 36 feet.
So I'll say 40. So that way, it protects everybody who are living in that area there. And now, also, because they have parapits, and I know I have a few seconds left in these buildings, is it above the 40? So then, in essence, it would be a cell site. How many feet high above? How much higher could the actual instrument be if it's a cell site?
The ordinance would allow it where the roof is at least 36 feet, but you can't go more than 10 feet above the roof.
So this is 40?
Then you couldn't go more than 50, if the zone allowed it. If you had a 1VL district, the height limit is limited to 45 feet. In that particular example, this would not allow you to go 46 feet.
What do you think?
You would have to stay within the 45 feet. If you had a height district where there's no height limit, but just a floor area limit, then you could go as high as the building could go.
And as a zoning administrator, have you seen a display of various types of apparatus that they use for this? You know, I've seen some that remind me of the old Jackie Gleason-style TV antennas, you know, where they're just antennas and then just bars on them, but then I see some that are more elaborate. Have you seen a variety of that? And is there some type of, and I, you know, is there some variety that we could have a higher standard of?
Yeah. What you would see, Councilman, is no antenna. There would be a box that would be built on the roof, typically of fiberglass, so the transmission can go through the fiberglass, but the antenna would be inside. You wouldn't know if there's one or 100. You couldn't see it, and that's what we were trying to do, is screen whatever would be on the roof through this box.
Can I put this on the desk for a minute? I want to talk to Mr. Reyes for some expertise in planning. Is that all right, Mr. President?
Mr. Reyes is next on the queue to speak.
I'll just go ahead and talk with Tom on the side.
Okay. And so we'll keep it on the desk for a minute. We have a written amending motion that's been circulated, and now a verbal amending motion by Mr. Labanche when we pick this item back up. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 54, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item 54.
Do we want to, is this the one we want to reopen the public hearing on?
Yes. Okay. All the speakers, or do we have a few representatives from the group?
I don't know. Whatever, I mean, I think they, some people would like to come and testify.
Let's put up a 10-minute clock then, to be fair.
Okay.
And what I'll do is, I'll read all the names of the people who have submitted speaker cards on item 54. I would ask that you please form a line behind the podium and be as brief as possible, not to be too repetitive of the people who have spoken before you. The longer one individual speaks, the less people are going to get a chance to speak. So if you can keep your comments...
And colleagues, just to set the stage for you, this is a motel in my council district that has been a nuisance in the community, and the zoning administrator has imposed some conditions on this motel, and actually Plum, with my council colleague Tony Carton, has actually imposed a stricter condition than I'd even thought about, but I support that. And so I think you're going to hear today from the community and the applicant in terms of those issues, and then I'll talk after everyone speaks.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, if we can put up that 10-minute clock, please. And the council called forward Lou Watson, followed by Matty Menzey, David Bilford, Sharon Young, Russell Johnson, Charles Peterson, Doran de Kay Kurtley, Baogang Zhao, Alicia Arias, Veronica Dennis, Robert Timoney, and, well, Captain Frank from LAPD, we ought to get you out of order. And colleagues, this is a semi-judicial matter. Let's make an extra effort to be in our seats and pay attention here. Councilmembers? Councilmembers? This is a semi-judicial matter. Let's make an extra effort here.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Lou Watson, and I am a resident of Athens-on-the-Hill, and I'm also the District Number Five Representative of the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, of which the community is a part of. The community is in opposition, the community in opposition is not here in force today because I telephoned them late Monday evening and advised them that this hearing had been postponed until next Tuesday. To my dismay, late yesterday evening, I received a telephone call informing me that this matter was on calendar today. Needless to say, I did not have time to make contact with the residents who had rearranged their schedules in order to be present next Tuesday. However, I assure you that the community residents are adamant about the fact that all of the conditions imposed by the ZA and the modifications made at the Plum Committee Hearing are adopted. At the Plum Committee Hearing on Tuesday, on October 11th, an event occurred which was right out of a Perry Mason TV show. The applicant had just testified as to how his business is not a public nuisance and how he personally is trying to help enhance the quality of life of the residents and the community. After his testimony, a resident insisted on speaking in opposition to the appeal. She informed the Plum Committee Hearing that she resides next door to the motel. She testified that she has owned and resided at the location for over 20 years. At this point, she became very emotional. She accused the applicant of falsely testifying. In fact, she said he was lying. She described how pimps and prostitutes are fighting, cursing, conducting their business, and just creating havoc in and around her house and the community. She, in fact, put a nail in his coffin. She had direct testimony as to what she sees on a daily basis because she lives next door to that motel. Other residents testified at the original ZA hearing in San Pedro along the same lines. We, the community, urged the council to uphold the ZA, the Plum Committee, and the community in its opposition to the ongoing business at the Edge of Town Motel. Thank you.
My name is Matty Menzey, and I'm District Representative for the Seventh District of the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. And Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council sent a letter in opposition to this, and I'm here in support of that letter of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. My name is David Bilford. I'm an attorney. I represent the owner of the property. What actually happened at the Plum Committee Hearing on the 11th is the matter was postponed for three hours because council members were not available. And then when the matter was finally called as the last item on the agenda, I began my presentation. I was asked graciously to allow the police officers to testify, and I was assured that I would be given the opportunity to finish. I wasn't. None of the 12 people who were present from the community in support of the appellant got to testify. And what wound up happening, we went there after having met with representatives...
Let me ask you to take a brief pause here, because you do deserve the respect of our attention here. Colleagues, it's getting a little loud back here. Again, let me ask you to please take your seats and focus on the speaker in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. What wound up happening is we went to the hearing at the Plum Committee, having met with two of the deputies for Councilwoman Hahn, and having gotten support from them to three of the modifications we were requesting, including item number two. And based on what we went to the committee hearing thinking it would have cost my clients $500 a month, $6,000 a year, to provide a licensed security service 24 hours a day on-call. And what wound up happening at the conclusion of the hearing is that the term "onsite" was added, and I submitted a declaration to the council file today with a copy of my client's tax return and audited, unaudited financial statement for the first six months of this year, along with a proposal from a security service. And in order to provide security guard on-site 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at $15 an hour, which is actually on the low side, would cost my client $131,000 a year instead of $6,000 a year, and that is more than this business grosses. And that is more than this business grosses. It is clear that the modified condition number two amounts to a taking of the property. Mr. Buher did not ask for on-site security. The Associate Zoning Administrator, who heard this matter at the public hearing, who rendered an almost thirty-page report, specifically said at page twenty-five of his report that after a year, when we have a plan approval review hearing, if the conditions aren't working, then and only then should it be considered to put on-site security some of the time. And instead, we left this Plum Committee hearing where, through no fault of the council members, but because of a lengthy city council hearing, we wound up starting at four-thirty in the afternoon, and two of the members of the committee had to leave after five minutes of our hearing, and none of the people in support got heard. We had a hundred and sixty petitions from neighbors that we filed in support of this business, another sixty-one petitions from patrons of the motel. And yes, there were four members from the Athens-on-the-Hill community who said that they have a problem with the motel. But even the police officers who testified at the Plum, Detective Moore said he supported the Z.A. recommendations. And there was no recommendation for on-site security in Mr. Buher's report. A sergeant from Southeast Area Vice talked about problems in the community, but he didn't say they were associated with the motel. Senior Lead Officer Ramirez testified that there had been no arrests at this particular motel in the year that he had been the senior lead officer. I would submit that what happened at the Plum Committee is a travesty. It went from a six-thousand-dollar-year expense to my client to a hundred and thirty-one thousand-dollar-year expense, and there's no justification for it. The committee adopted the findings of Mr. Buher's report and then completely changed condition number two to where it is not at all what he had recommended and not at all what my client can afford. If this condition is left requiring security twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, my client can't continue to operate this business. And frankly, I've been doing this kind of work for nine years. I can't imagine a court not granting a writ of mandate based on what happened and the fact that this amounts to a taking of the property.
Thank you. Let me, yeah. Call the next speaker forward, please.
Hi. My name is Sharon Young, and I stay at 12620 Figaroa, right directly across the street from the motel. And from what I see, and I can see from where I stay dead into the motel, from what I see, the problem is on the outside. It's not the inside because you can't control what's on the outside of the walls. So my problem is, they are walking up and down the street, the prostitutes or whatever they want to call it. They walk up and down the street there in front of my apartment building, and I can't control what's on the outside. So I don't feel like it should be closed due to the fact that the prostitute, they're going to go wherever they want. They're going to stand wherever they want because on the outside, that's city property. We can't control that.
My name is Russell Johnson. I manage apartment building on one hundred and twenty-first Figaroa Street. Been there for fifteen years. I've never noticed any commotion at that hotel. Most of the commotion that goes on is out on the streets. It's always been that way. Thank you.
My name is Deronda Curtley, and I've been at this motel for four years and five months. It's the only place in town that is convenient, and I can live there because of my income. I can't find another place that's affordable. Thank you.
I'm Charles Peterson, a veteran. I've been living here at the Edge of Town Motel for five months and four years, awaiting my Section Eight. They haven't contacted me yet. As far as I'm concerned, the Edge of Town Motel is a well-banos and a business establishment, and I've been quite comfortable there. Thank you.
My name is Veronica Dennis, and I live at 12116 off Figaroa, across the street from the motel. I've been there for two years. I have children of my own and grandchildren of my own. And they can't even go outside to play because of the things that go on Figaroa. And I don't see why the owner of the motel having problems on the inside because it's on the outside of the motel. You know, I have to keep my babies in the house because they sit in front of our house and do things. They walk up and down the street and smoke their dope and stuff. And I don't think it's fair to my babies either, you know, to have to stay in the house to play. You know, they need to put more police out there on the street to stop them from doing what they do.
My name is Alicia Arias. I've been staying there for three and a half weeks. The reason why we moved in there is because it was closer to a job. Since we've been there, me and my husband stay there. Since we've been there, I mean, we haven't seen no problems inside the property. There's obviously problems and prostitutes and persons outside the property. But I don't think it's fair for you guys to close this hotel because it's affordable for low-income people that have necessities to go into hotels. So I don't think it'll be right if you guys close. I'm not saying this because I'm staying there, but because soon enough, we're going to have to leave that place since when we find an apartment building or something. So I don't think it'll be fair for you guys to close it. Thank you.
My name is Robert Timoney. I've been living on Figaroa for approximately twenty-five years. Problem with the motel is not the motel. It's the people that comes to it, mainly the ones on the streets, because they're prostitutes. I know most of the people live on the street. I know most are prostitutes because I talk to people, people are people. The motel don't have nothing to do with the problem. It's the people in the neighborhood. The police can't stop it, and they're still going the same thing. It's still prostitution. The man puts cameras up, he puts a security system, he's got signs, it's strictly legal. He's posted. But what can he do? He's trying. Thank you.
My name is Baogang Zhao. Please allow me to lay red for you.
Mr. Zhao is the manager of the motel, and because of his English, he asked me if I would tell what his declaration, which has been submitted to the file dated October ten, two thousand and five. It was submitted at the Plum Committee hearing. He's worked there for three years. He's seen that the owner consistently tries to improve the property, that he's undergone training in March to help improve his ability to comply with the requirements regarding registration. There's a three-foot fence that was built that wasn't even required to be built. All of the dilapidated cars, weeds, and trash have been removed. There's been gardening improvements and a new front desk that was installed with a microphone for better communication with the guests and the employees, even has amplification so they can speak to people outside. And I would ask, if possible, to be given the opportunity to respond after LAPD testifies.
Thank you very much. This concludes, once again, public comment on this item. We do have some city staff that wants to come forward. Captain Frank from LAPD, Dan Whitley from the Office of the City Attorney. And it's now time to recognize Ms. Han. Or did you want to hear a staff presentation first?
Okay.
Mr. President, councilmembers, good morning. My name is Captain Horace Frank. I'm the Patrol Commanding Officer of Southeast Patrol Division. With me is Officer Stacy.
Stacy Young. I'm Officer Stacy Young with LAPD Vice Division.
And I'm Dan Whitley. I'm a deputy city attorney with the Safe Neighborhoods Division. I was assigned to the abatement of the hotel at 503 Athens.
And just adding with us is Sergeant Jevansky, who's our vice supervisor at Southeast. Councilmembers, I think the issue for us is not so much closing the motel, but rather looking at conditions that would improve the efficacy, the standard of living of people that live in that community. There were some statements made earlier with regards to crime in the area or the absence of crime at that location. That is not true. I can go through a list of the stuff that we've had dating back from between July two thousand and January of this year. January twenty-first, two thousand and five, ten-ten P.M., stolen vehicle, victim assaulted in the room of the motel, property stolen, and the vehicle stolen from parking lot of the motel. November twelfth of last year, robbery. A suspect used a handgun to steal money from a victim who was a clerk at the motel. November fourth, arrest of prostitution at the location, prostitution with priors. And there's a litany of these crimes at the location. I've personally spoken with a senior lead officer of that location. He has not been there for a year, as was previously alleged. He just took over that location, that particular basic car, I think, in June of this year. So certainly, he's not been there for a year. And I spoke with him, and he's also told me of the problems that they've had at that location. We've been in constant contact with community members. They are certainly in favor of this condition with regards, of all the conditions, and certainly the one with regards to the security at the location. With regards to the issue of a miscommunication or misunderstanding in terms of the language of the security, it was pretty clear, based on the June ninth, two thousand and five, report that was prepared by the Building and Safety. And it says, item number three, it says, I'm sorry, item number two, "The motel owner shall contract with a California licensed security guard to regularly patrol the property twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week." So there was no misunderstanding in terms of on-site versus off-site. It was pretty clear in the language here.
And I, Dan Whitley, from the City Attorney's Office. I'm only here to speak about the abatement efforts we made prior to this going to the zoning administration. We had opened this case up for abatement. We had had a city attorney office hearing with the owners. We gave them an opportunity to comply with voluntary conditions. They complied with some, did not comply with others, but the problem didn't end. We had our city attorney office hearing in two thousand and three, and as Captain Frank just told you, crime continued unabated. The other problem that we have had for my office with this case is that the owners have a history of doing as little as they need to to deal with these problems. At a community hearing in last spring, where the owner and the owner's son appeared to address the local community, we discussed some of these issues. And one of the things I asked them to do, as a gesture of good faith, was to get a photocopier and take photocopies of the IDs presented by tenants. We've, in our experience, that's one of the highest-rated things for getting rid of crime at a location. And that was never done. So that's the sort of history we have with this hotel. This isn't coming out of the blue. This isn't a place where there wasn't crime, and there was a history of compliance with the owners with anything we've asked them to do.
And councilmembers, I apologize. I indicated that the report was from the Building and Safety. It was actually from the Office of Zoning Administration. So my apologies on that.
Ms. Han.
I'm fine. It was all okay. Okay. Thank you. Colleagues, to me, this is a very clear issue. The community in and around this location has been working with my office. They've been working, as you can hear, with LAPD. They've been working with our neighborhood prosecutor to address the nuisance activities that have occurred at this location for really as long as I can remember. Let me just give you kind of a list of the things that have happened here. Rape, prostitution, narcotics, stolen vehicles, robbery, burglary, sexual assault, and attempted murder. The city, as you know, only uses this procedure of declaring a property a nuisance and issuing conditions when all other remedies have not worked. And in attempt, as you've heard, to mitigate some of these nuisances, the City Attorney's Office held a hearing in December of two thousand and two. And the owner of the motel signed a list of suggestions to abate narcotic and vice activity at this motel. Several months later, the LAPD and our Department of Building and Safety returned to the property to follow up, to see whether or not this motel owner had complied with the suggestions that he agreed to, and found that the owner was not complying, as you've heard, with all these suggestions, which is why we are here today. At a hearing in March of this year, the zoning administrator found enough evidence to declare this hotel a public nuisance and to place conditions on the property. The owner filed an appeal on some of these conditions, and my office worked with the applicant to try to address some of those concerns. But at the Plum Committee meeting on October eleventh, at the recommendation of LAPD and at the recommendation of the members of our community, this committee actually went above and beyond even what we had talked about and added one more additional condition of requiring security guards twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I absolutely concur with that recommendation. And I concur with that recommendation because, as you've heard even from the tenants, you know, we want to protect the tenants. We want to protect the across-the-street neighbor who has children and grandchildren that she has to keep inside. They can't even go outside to play. And it would be great if we had, you know, police officers that, you know, could patrol twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in that one location. But as we've heard today in another item, we don't have enough police officers. So to me, an on-site security officer, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, makes sense because we know when there is a visible law enforcement officer, we know that a lot of these crimes would not be committed. So I absolutely concur with Plum. I thank Councilwoman Cardenas for actually bringing that up and making that recommendation based on another incident he had in his own district. The LAPD, the community, said that they would be in complete support of this. They want nothing less. The applicant actually came and said, could we compromise and do on-site, you know, about three hours a night? And I said, no. At this point, I'm going to stand with my community, who have lived with this nuisance. This has really impeded on the quality of life for the tenants, for the neighbors, and for the surrounding community. So I'm going to stick with my community on this one and ask that we uphold the Plum Committee's recommendation to have these conditions, plus the additional one of extra security, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I will make this point to apologize to the community for the notice of this taking place today. We were going to hear it on Fridays, I mean, we were going to hear it on next Tuesday, City Council. But then we were told that Friday was the last day we could act on this matter. And as you know, we just voted yesterday to cancel City Council on Friday. So we scrambled to alert the community to this difference. It doesn't matter how many of you showed up today. I know the strength of the community on this issue, and I have no doubt where they would like us to vote today. So colleagues, I ask that you support the committee recommendation. And just to make it very clear, the Plum Committee has wanted a technical amendment to condition two should read, "The motel owner shall contract with a California licensed security service for on-site security services twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week." Let's make that very clear. I hope you'll stand with me on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize the next speaker, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been advised by our land use attorneys that Mr. Bilford should be allowed a two-minute testimony to respond to the staff reporting.
Thank you. I would like to, first of all, point out that Captain Frank, although he may believe that the language of the condition that was in the AZA report and decision is clear that it required on-site, I would quote from the declaration, I mean, I'm sorry, from page twenty-five of the report. And it specifically says that on-site security is an alternative if and only if, at the hearing one year later, it's determined that the on-call security that was required. And I would say paragraph two on page twenty-five of the report. Mr. Buher is here. You can ask him. He's the Associate Zoning Administrator. He did not ask for on-site security. He simply states at page twenty-five that that's an alternative. Again, I see there are three LAPD officers here, but the officers who testified at the Plum Committee hearing, none of them indicated that there were problems associated with this particular motel. They said the problems are in the community. What we're being asked here to do is to hire a security guard. As Councilwoman Han said, of course, it would be great to have a licensed security guard at every business. But it isn't fair to the owner to require them to pay a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year out of a business that generates income of a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to provide security that isn't addressing problems in the motel. It's being asked to address problems that are outside the motel. You had nine people here who testified that the problem, four of whom live in the motel, who testified that the problems aren't being caused by the motel. Yes, there are problems on Athens Boulevard and in that community in general. But my client is not contributing to those problems. It's a clear taking of the property to impose a condition that would require them to spend more money than the business generates in gross income. And I would again submit that Mr. Buher's recommendations -- And I would again submit that Mr. Bucher's recommendations, his lengthy report, based on the fact that the Plum Committee adopted his findings, that his recommendations and the conditions he suggested should be what the City Council ultimately adopts, and not at the last minute after an incomplete Plum Committee hearing, adding a condition that costs my client 20 times the condition that he imposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank the officers for their hard work and the due diligence of the Council Office. Colleagues, this is one of the situations where we are carrying agenda items of over 25, 27 items. And we take a lot of attention and focus to address each one with the time and the value it deserves. And sometimes, like yesterday, we went all the way till 5:30 PM after council. And we have every stakeholder, every interest group in each case deliberating, and we offer them the time necessary. So I humbly disagree with the assertion that it was an incomplete hearing. It was as complete as you can get, given the evidence being presented to the committee. The assertion is that we're adding on beyond what the zoning administrator offered. What I'm trying to state here is that we added on based on the evidence heard on that moment. That is the purpose of the Planning, Land Use, and Management Committee, to assess the information, go through the process of understanding the law, and providing relief, providing a fair response to the issue, given what prompted that case to be there in the first place. So we heard clearly today that the City Attorney and the officers have identified incidents from within the motel. The posture being taken by the attorney is that everything is happening outside, therefore we're penalizing the owner. In my mind, that is misleading, that is wrong. We have facts to bear that prove that incidents occurred within the motel, which prompted us to take the necessary steps to deal with the quality of life, to address the needs of the community, both tenants and eventually owner, because if you get an incident where you get someone out of control without security, who's to say that the managers and the owners won't be threatened and their lives could be at peril? So the bottom line here is, we're trying our best to weigh out all the pros and cons. We know there's an incredible housing issue here. This is another bifurcation of the have and have-nots. That's something we need to contend with as a body in the general picture with the housing issues at hand. But in this specific case, we strongly felt that the facts given to us by the City Attorney, by the LAPD, the testimony, the actions we took were the appropriate actions, and we did provide enough time for everyone to give their point of view. I ask for an eye vote.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, Captain, members of the LAPD, City Attorney, and of the community people. Sometimes folks wonder, do we ever listen to what you have to say? Well, I'm impressed with the turnout from the community, the turnout from the Police Department. And I know Captain Frank personally, I've visited his division. We rode around on a ride-along with a former colleague, Martin Ludlow, who's gone off to other activities, and impressed with the operation that you had, and the necessary deployment of personnel and the problems that occur in that division that you command. So the fact that you're here with the testimony, and I see the record that one of your officers has there, and I know the police reports are cumbersome, and there's a stack of reports there. The statement made regarding the hotel is in the community, well, it may be in the community, it may be a magnet for problems. And I believe it's incumbent upon the owner of that to make sure that the proper regulations are there so they have a quality of life. And listening to the folks that have spent the time to come down here and spend a couple hours here listening, we want a quality of life in this entire city for everyone. Doesn't matter what part of the city, but all cities. I was at Plum yesterday. I know how the Plum Committee takes that painstaking task to go through the issues, to go through the agendas. And Janice Hahn, I know what you have done to try and clean up that community that you represent in the 15th District. So I'm totally supportive. And don't think that we don't listen, don't think we don't respond, but I just wanted to pass it on to you, Captain. You haven't been here since I think you made captain. Congratulations on that. And you got my support. Don't think that we don't want to help as a partnership. Sometimes in vice, it's frustrating. Does anyone care? Does anything ever get done? Well, I think you're going to look around this horseshoe and find it's going to get done today. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ms. Hahn.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to wrap it up. And again, I appreciate all the hard work you all have done to try to protect and serve this community, and I appreciate that. And while the zoning administrator, you're right, did not recommend this, but recommended it only after a year if the current conditions failed. Well, you know what? I appreciate, again, my colleagues on the Plum Commission for really looking at this and basically saying, this community doesn't deserve another year of this kind of nuisance and violent crime happening in their community. They deserve us today to take actions to stop that. And for the tenants that live in this motel, we are in no means wanting to shut this motel down in any way. This is about protecting your lives. This is about protecting the manager who is there. This is about protecting the people who live across the street from this. So this is a good thing, it's a right thing, and I appreciate all the hard work you did to bring us to this point. This community will thank us and appreciate us looking out for their best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Again, all items approved today are going forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 27 was being held on the desk. There is a substitute motion that has been distributed with the new ordinance, and I believe there is also a verbal amendment.
Okay. Ms. Labonge had offered a verbal amendment on 27. Your question's answered.
Thank you. I did. It was 40 feet, 40 feet. The chairman, verbal amendment, Mr.?
So that objection was before us, it's a substitute motion as amended.
Thank you.
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, and the City Attorney will submit a corrected page with the 40 feet.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
No, that should be nine ayes and one no. Please let the record reflect, Mr. Rosendahl is a no vote.
And the ordinance will go over one week.
Okay. Next item.
Our next item, Mr. President. Item number 55 was called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss, Ms. Cardenas.
Just receive and file. That's okay with everybody?
Okay. Let's open the roll on that motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. That item is received and filed. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 43 was adopted previously. However, there's an amending motion that has been distributed. Do you wish to reconsider that to adopt the amending motion?
Who's introduced the amending motion?
That was Councilmember Labonge, and it is on a special event, and it is mentioning that this event will be sponsored by Council District Ford. That's the amendment.
Okay. Mr. Labonge moves reconsideration of item 43. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is back before us. We do have that amending motion now. Without objection, let's open the roll on the amending motion for 43, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. And in accordance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
First item before council is item number 48, and that settlement in the case of City versus Mahendra family. It's an eminent domain, and the settlement is $190,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next item is item number 50, and that settlement in the case of Flor La Caio versus City of Los Angeles, at all, and the amount of $335,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved as well.
And then the last item is item number 52, and that's a workers' comp case. Settlement is $98,095 and a life pension of $38.65 per week thereafter.
Okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Well, since we're not meeting on Friday, I just wanted to remind everyone who's watching Channel 35 or any of my colleagues, you're welcome to come along on Saturday. It's hard to believe, but we're actually dedicating the second phase of our world-class promenade on the waterfront. It's amazing we've been able to build a beautiful grand promenade along our harbor, along our waterfront, and we're dedicating the second phase of it this Saturday, October 29th, 11 o'clock will be the grand opening. And then 1 o'clock, we're going to have a Halloween costume contest for all children in and around the neighborhood of the waterfront, but certainly from far and wide all over Los Angeles, all kids are invited to come. 1 o'clock this Saturday for a costume contest, free rides on the spooky red car, free parking, and it should be a great time. Come, all Angelinos, and embrace your waterfront. This is the waterfront of the city. It's getting better and more beautiful every single day, and everyone's welcome to come this Saturday.
Ms. Labonge.
Thank you for that great waterfront. Another option for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday and Halloween is our Travel Town Live Steamers just east of Travel Town, where they have a wonderful Halloween event at their little train today. Everyone rides for free. So come to Griffin Park, come early. It starts right at sunset. And remember, this time of year, spring forward and we fall back. We set our clocks back on Saturday night, so the hours will change. Sunset will be at 5:08 instead of 6:08. It's, no, it's this week, and so we should be prepared for that. And also to know to come out to Live Steamers for a great event at the Halloween for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And be careful at Halloween on trick-or-treating and all the safety that goes into that as you walk through the neighborhoods and watch when you cross the streets. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Halloween.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make this announcement for Mr. Parks on Saturday, October 29th, Sunday, October 30th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, both days. Community to community for hurricane relief, sponsored by Councilman Parks's office, the Brotherhood Crusade. There will be a parking lot sale, book drive, and people are encouraged to bring new and gently-used books and drop off other items, household goods, at 333-9 West 43rd Street in the Regency West Parking Lot.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. This weekend, the Orange Line opens along the East-West corridor, so we invite people to come out. There's going to be free rides. Get familiar with the Orange Line. That will be running from Warner Center to North Hollywood, so we invite the public to come out to the Orange Line. Also, a couple of other items that we have, Dia de los Muertos along Sherman Way, and the All-American City Canoga Park is also this weekend. We invite people to come out to enjoy the activities there. Sunday is the Cops for Tots Car Show at the L.A. Police Academy. And Westfield will be holding a Halloween contest on Sunday. And for those individuals who are going to be out Monday, the Halloween, I think, Councilmember Labonge, we still have that no silly string along Hollywood Boulevard.
Yes, very good, Officer Zine.
I wanted to, because I'll be working Monday, so I don't want to get silly string on my uniform. And to everyone, a happy weekend and a happy Halloween. Thank you.
And a safe Halloween.
Safe Halloween.
For all the parents out there. Do we have any adjourned motions today? Please rise for adjourned motions. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Virginia Benedict, who passed away on October 20th. And she was 87 years old, and she was born in Los Angeles on May 17th in 1918. She lived in Los Angeles her entire life and worked for several years at Boeing Aircraft. She was active in Neighborhood Concerns and a member of the 135th Street Neighborhood Watch. Virginia is survived by three children, Gerald, Marjorie, and Patricia, another one of her sons, predeceased, her son William. She's also survived by 19 grandchildren and step-grandchildren, 28 great-grandchildren, and 17 great-great-grandchildren. Wow. She will be missed by her family, her friends, and really the larger community of Los Angeles.
Ms. Labonge.
Members, I'd like to ask to adjourn in memory of Battalion Chief Bill White, retired, Los Angeles City Fire Department. Bill White came on the job in 1962, worked in 1998. He worked in the district that I represented, as well as Mr. Reyes in Battalion Two up there in insur parts of your cities. His funeral service is right now at the Los Angeles City Fire Memorial Fire Station, 27 Old 27th in Hollywood. Also, members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Henry Cho, 76-year-old Angelino walking in a crosswalk marked, walking with a walk sign when someone who was not thinking, intoxicated, abusive, struck and killed him at Fifth and Vermont. Henry Cho is survived by his children. It's a tragedy to work in the Los Angeles Police Department to try to capture the person who perpetrated that crime. Also, I'd like to ask to adjourn in memory of Alejandro Martinez, 35-year-old resident of Los Angeles who tragically was shot while walking out of a neighborhood store on Beverly Boulevard in the 4th District. He had four children, and in such a violent act, ask to adjourn in memory of Alejandro Martinez.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to adjourn in memory of Kiyoshi Sawano. Kiyoshi Sawano, the principal designer and member of the Adachi Sawano and Matsunaga architectural team, which produced the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center in Little Tokyo, died at the age of 87 in Orange, California. Mr. Sawano studied architecture at Waseda University, graduating in 1943. He served as an academy instructor in the Japanese Imperial Navy during World War II. After the war, he helped with reconstruction of several landmark theaters and cinemas in Tokyo. The following year, he immigrated to Los Angeles with his wife Yasuko and his daughter. Mr. Sawano designed the East San Gabriel Cultural and Community Center and the Gardena Buddhist Church. He is survived by his wife Yasuko Judy Sawano, daughter Alyssa, son Albert, and grandchildren Melina or Melina and Thomas. The second adjourned motion is in memory of Louis W. Lawson, who passed away on October 20th, 2005, just eight days short of his 85th birthday. He was the father of Craig Lawson. Louis lived a full and meaningful life and was a great man and loving father. He will be missed by his wife of 53 years, as well as many relatives and friends, and we join the family in mourning his loss. He will be truly missed and never be forgotten. His family is encouraging donations in his memory to the American Heart Association or the Jewish United Fund, I'm sorry, and the Federation, Jewish Federation of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request for adjourn in memory of Harrison Richard Young, passed away July 3, 2005. Harrison was born in Port Huron, Michigan, was a resident of Los Angeles for many years, was a fine actor who spent years on the stage in New York before he ventured to California to continue his career in film and television, longtime actor. Harrison Young and his wife traveled to Normandy with the scenes of him as the old man Private Ryan at the beginning and the end of the film, Saving Private Ryan, were filmed. I knew Harrison Richard Young. He worked at the Los Angeles Police Protector League for many years, a wonderful man with a wonderful heart, a good, kind friend. Many friends felt very privileged just to be able to call him Richard. He will be missed by his family and all who knew him, survived by his wife Denise, three daughters, Lisa Young, Michelle Gates, and Mary Paul. He was a good man, and may Harrison Richard Young rest in peace. Also, Mr. President, the Daily News today lists the 2,000 names of our brave military soldiers who perished in the war, and just like to acknowledge the families of those 2,000 soldiers. All those names are printed in today's Daily News. May all of those soldiers rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.